Lewiston City Council Work Session to Order, January 6, 2025, 3:00 PM. At the time and place as advertised. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd please stand and join us in reciting the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to God, of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here today. Our next order of business is Citizen Comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Also, the Lewiston City Council pledges to practice and promote civility within the governing body, advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their view. Find better solutions. Finding solutions for the progressive citizen. Let's find out what that is. That's clear fluid. It's okay. So with that, I will open up Citizen Comments. If you have comments to offer, we have a podium right up front here. And above your head is three microphones. They're illuminated by the green light. Please remember to speak up loudly and clearly, project your voice, so that those listening at home and those here in the room can hear what you have to say. So with that, I would open it up to Citizen Comments.
No, Alan, go ahead. I've been first at a number of meetings.
Alan Brown. I work at SEL. I spent 27 years working for Franz in Wonder Bread, delivering bread. I put my name in to have the opportunity to fill a vacant seat. And I came in case you had any questions for me or comments, things you'd like to know more about me to make a better decision on your choice.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Put a face to a name.
Hi, I am Linda Glance. I live here in Lewiston. Pretty sure most of you are familiar with who I am now. I just want to share why I wish to serve on council. I've spent a lot of time learning about how this city works and processes. I've read through most council packets and attended or observed from home numerous meetings over the last couple of years. Recently, I've assisted and represented a group of people who have no idea how issues with the city work. I myself, through this entire process, gained some major knowledge in all of this. I'm the type of person that likes to serve and represent and look after people. And I feel that the citizens here need to have someone who wants to listen and help them, and that's something I'm really passionate about. I mean, I want to help. I want to try to represent where I can and serve. And I understand through your process with watching all of these sessions that there's a lot of unpopular and hard decision-making that needs to be done. Obviously, I've participated in that. But I really feel, with my research and knowledge, that I can make those type of decisions too unnecessarily. You know, my hope is that you're going to select me for Hannah's position, because my plan is to run for city council this fall. I feel that it is something that I'm meant to do at this point. I know, and I'm thanking you for this opportunity to let me share that I really am interested in wanting to do this. I really am interested in it. I feel for the correct reasons, and I appreciate you reviewing my application.
Well, I'm Matt Wright. I put in my name for city council for Hannah's position. I grew up in cul-de-sac Idaho and moved here into town about 15 years ago. Wife and I bought a home here in town about 11 years ago. I work at Cambia Health Solutions. You might better know it as Regions Blue Cross Blue Shield here in town. I've worked there for the last 15 years and started out working in customer service in the beginning. I lucked into a fun project that we were doing, which was MakingRegions.com, the website. And I had skills in that area, so worked with our engineers and legal and privacy and wrote up all the processes, procedures, and we built out Regions.com. It's a much different site today than when I helped on that project and traveled around and trained our teams in our various states. Fast forward a few years, I moved over to the Digital Health Solutions Division in Infrastructure and Operations at the company. I work as a problem manager currently, and that's in about the last nine years, maybe a little longer, of my life. In problem management, on a daily basis, I'll get a whole variety of problems, some complex, some simple. I've never come across one so far that I haven't been able to solve. And when it comes to problem management, which is why I applied for this position, it's not necessarily what you would think, just an IT role, you're an IT person doing problem management. It's more about communicating with people, negotiating, and being able to see the difference between a good procedure, a good process, and a not-so-good one, and pick the right one. All problems are unique. Most of the solutions to those problems are unique. But the process that we follow to analyze problems and to propose good solutions, those aren't unique. And I believe I can bring that to the table and help you guys on city council as one of your new members. So with that, if you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, appreciate your time and consideration. Thanks.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Bob Blakely. I am too one of your candidates. Appointing this person is a little different than running for an election. You're running for an election, you've got to convince the citizens that you are the correct person. You run based on emotions, you run on what you think the public wants to hear. Right now, you're going to be selecting a person who has to fill a short-term position, who has to bring some skills to the table immediately. You have budget hearings coming up this summer, you have other issues on the table, and you don't, I don't really believe you have the time to get somebody schooled up on some of these issues quickly. You have an opportunity in the fall for that person to run for reelection or not to get reelected if you appoint them. Running a city is much like, is running a corporation. You are roughly a $60 to $70 million corporation. You're in the city council. You're also the Board of Directors, and it's your job to run that budget and run it faithfully and correctly in serving the best interests of the people. I've always believed, the eight years that I was on the city council, that it's important to keep the city relevant. You've got to keep our city relevant. Our competition is Moscow, Pullman, cities from the south of southern Idaho. We've got to stay relevant to continue to attract people who want to live in this city and work in this city. And how do you do that? You do that every time you have a meeting. You talk about infrastructure, how to make our city a safe place, how to keep our water flowing, make sure our sewers are working. Prior city councils did some of that hard work in getting those bond issues passed. Now it's your job to implement all that. Going forward, you're talking about a wonderful project that could involve renovation of downtown. That's a big deal. I like the way you're approaching it. You're talking, you're going to be telling the taxpayers that there won't be a tax increase, and that is true. But you've got to convince the taxpayers of that. Telling them one thing, convincing them, and that's an education component. And I believe from the prior bond issue experiences I had, I can bring that tool to the table. We've got to convince the voters that a renovation of downtown, rehabilitation of downtown, is a good thing for our city. It's right there, falling into the ballpark of keeping our city relevant.
Citizen Comments?
I've got one. I'm Douglas Wilson. I'm also just another candidate for the council. And you guys have already seen my resume, so you kind of already have my background. Basically, just wanted to say that I'm pretty eager to get involved with local politics. I've always been interested in politics. I've always been kind of involved with our group in CAMI. But really, just kind of put my name out there more, but also, you guys' idea. I mean, running a company, and I co-founded another company. I know what a P and L is. I read them every single month. I know how to go through numbers. Like, if we're trying to improve Lewiston as a community, then what I always think about is how can we deregulate and how can we make people's dollars go further, whether it's lowering taxes or just increasing development? I think Lewiston is going to be really a key component for Idaho. It has a lot of space to grow, and so we've got to say.
Okay, seeing no more Citizen Comments. We'll close Citizen Comments and move on to our active agenda. Item A, ZNC 24-4, request for reconsideration, concerning whether to affirm, reverse, or modify city council's decision on the application for zone change by Chris Clark to rezone the East 43 Feet, approximately of 132 Thane Road from Community Commercial C3 to Medium Density Residential R3 pursuant to Lewiston City Code 37-185B. This is an action item, and we welcome to the floor our city attorney, Jennifer Tangano. Jennifer, please introduce yourself to the record. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, city councilors. My name is Jennifer Tangano. I am city attorney. And I'm here today to give you a brief procedural background of this particular action and the procedure for reconsidering your decision in ZNC 24-4. On August 30th, Chris Clark, on behalf of CLC Sales Incorporated, who is the applicant, submitted an application for zone change to change the zoning designation of the easterly 43 feet of 132 Thane Road from Community Commercial C3 Zone to Medium Density Residential R3 Zone. The subject property is approximately 0.477 acres and consists of a single commercial office building with five entryways identified on its floor plan and is currently partially occupied with commercial tenants. The zone change application requested a different zoning designation for the two eastern entryways of the building, while the rest of the building would keep its current C3 zoning. In effect, the proposal was to have one building with two different zoning designations. The Planning and Zoning Commission held two public hearings on September 25, 2024, and October 9, 2024, to review testimony and evidence regarding the application. During these hearings, the commission heard presentations from city staff, the applicant's architect, Jerry Rotnov, and the applicant, Chris Clark. The hearing also included a public comment period during which one individual spoke in opposition to the application, and Mr. Clark was given the opportunity to respond to the public testimony. A similar process occurred during the second public hearing held by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and an email supporting the application was also read into the public record. Ultimately, the commission voted to approve ZNC 24-4 with a 6-1 majority vote. Following this recommendation, the city council held a duly notice public hearing on ZNC 24-4 on November 25, 2024. At the start of the hearing, Councilor Schroders requested recusal under Idaho Code 67-6506, citing a potential conflict of interest as her brother owns property adjacent to the subject property. During the hearing, city staff gave a presentation, and the applicant, Chris Clark, provided testimony. When the floor was opened for public comment, two individuals spoke in opposition to the application. Mr. Clark was given an opportunity to rebut the opposing testimony. Throughout the hearing, city councilor, city council members asked questions of both staff and the applicant. In reviewing the applicant's request, the city council is required by Lewiston City Code 37-180.1 to consider the following relevant criteria and standards. Whether the proposed rezone is or is not in general conformance with the comprehensive plan, the subject land is or is not at least well, as well-suited or is better suited for the proposed zoning district than the existing zoning district. The proposed rezone does or does not present foreseen immedicable impacts of incompatible uses or development being located in the same vicinity. The effects of the proposed rezone are or are not anticipated to place undue burden upon delivery of services provided by any political subdivision within the planning jurisdiction, including school districts. The size, type, intensity, and density of development expected to occur on the subject property as a result of the rezoning is or is not suitable for the area and will or will not unduly burden the neighborhood, public infrastructure, or environmental resources. After the public hearing was closed, the city council deliberated on the application. Former councillor Lidkey moved to approve the application, but the motion failed with a 1 to 4 vote, resulting in the application's denial. In denying the application, the city council provided guidance on steps the applicant could take to secure future approval. A reason statement of relevant criteria and standards outlining the council's reasoning and guidance was prepared for review, and at the December 9, 2024, regular city council meeting, the reason statement was approved as proposed with a majority vote of 4 to 2. Pursuant to Lewiston City Code 37-185B, an applicant or affected person may file a written request for reconsideration with the city clerk to request that the city council reconsider a final decision within 14 calendar days by 5:00 PM on the 14th day after the city council has adopted its written reason statement of relevant criteria and standards. The written request for reconsideration shall include at minimum the following information: the name and address of the applicant or affected person, the specific deficiencies and the decision for which reconsideration is sought, and a description of any procedural injury or substantial harm to real property interests suffered as a result of the decision. A request for reconsideration is a mandatory exhaustion of the applicant's or the affected person's administrative remedies filed prior to filing an appeal of the city council's decision. The city clerk received the applicant's request for reconsideration on December 16. A full copy of the request is included in the city council's packet. This afternoon, you're being asked to reconsider your denial of ZNC 24-4 based on the following summarized grounds. The city council incorrectly determined the requested rezone is not in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan because it is fronted on both sides by residential streets and is in a mix, an area of mixed-use properties that contains both commercial and residential uses. Mr. Clark further noted that councillor Lidkey correctly stated the rezone does not negatively impact the neighboring properties. The city council incorrectly determined the property is not at least well-suited or better suited for the proposed zoning designation of Medium Density Residential because the property is bordered by R3-zoned properties and because Mr. Clark has been unable to rent out the commercial office space in the building. While the city council stated the split zoning is not desired, the city council has split zoned a large portion of Brighton Avenue, which is contrary to its statements that split zoning does not present a clean and concise application of zoning. The city council incorrectly determined that the proposed use of the property is not suitable for the property because it is bordered on two sides by residential uses and will not place an undue burden on the delivery of services. The city council placed too much weight on Mr. Edwards' testimony in opposition, which is irrelevant and false. Mr. Clark disputed the need to work with city staff to change city code to allow for split zones developments under defined conditions, since it's already an allowed use that the city council can approve. Mr. Clark alleges that councillor Spickelmeyer is biased because he made a statement that he, councillor Spickelmeyer, did not believe Mr. Clark's financial challenges were a consideration to be taken by the city council. Mr. Clark has further requested that I review councillor Spickelmeyer's statements and remove councillor Spickelmeyer from further participation in this matter, which I will not do. And Mr. Clark asserts that the city council has substantially harmed him because he is not being permitted to use his property to its highest and best use when the city council has determined that there are no adverse effects on the neighbors or the city's ability to provide services to the property, and when the city itself has split zoned property in the past for its own purposes. Generally, these issues cover a variety, cover a variety of topics and legal principles that you're being asked to reconsider today. In reviewing the applicant's request for reconsideration, it is my opinion that he raises the issues related to the following topics. The sufficiency or weight of the evidence in the record that the city council relied upon when making its decision to deny ZNC 24-4. To be valid, a rezoning decision must be supported by adequate findings of fact to support a conclusion that the zoning amendment is in accordance with an adopted comprehensive plan. The question of whether a zoning ordinance is in accordance with a comprehensive plan is a question of fact. A governing body charged to zone in accordance with its comprehensive plan must make a factual inquiry to determine whether the requested zoning amendment reflects the goals of and takes into account those factors in the comprehensive plan in light of the surrounding requests to rezone. The council misinterpreted its own city code when ultimately denying ZNC 24-4. Generally, there is a strong presumption in, of the validity of the actions of a zoning board, which includes the application and interpretation of its own zoning ordinances. Mr. Clark bears the burden of demonstrating that the city council erred in its decision-making process by proving that the zoning ordinance was applied improperly. Therefore, it is recommended that the city council carefully review the record to determine whether Mr. Clark has met his burden and whether he has sufficiently explained how the city council erred and how his substantial rights were violated as a result. An allegation of bias against an applicant in a land use application because a council member made an unfavorable statement in deliberation concerning the applicant's financial interests in the property. A decision maker is not disqualified simply because he or she has taken a position, even in public, on a policy issue related to the dispute in the absence of a showing that the decision maker is not capable of judging a particular controversy fairly on the basis of its own circumstances. While case law predominantly addresses concerns regarding pre-hearing statements or ex parte communications, that is, communications outside of the public record, Mr. Clark's focus lies elsewhere. Specifically, he challenges councillor Spickelmeyer's remarks made after the public hearing had concluded, concluded during the period when city council members were deliberating and sharing their perspectives on the application. Importantly, there has been no allegation of ex parte communications or other procedural improprieties prior to the hearing. Rather, Mr. Clark's concerns appear to stem from dissatisfaction with councillor Spickelmeyer's statements, which he perceived as having unduly influenced the remainder of the city council. However, such statements are not in and of themselves a conflict of interest, but a part of the normal course of action for a duly-elected public official acting in a quasi-judicial role. Finally, by denying the application, the applicant is denied the highest and best use of his property. The Idaho Supreme Court has clearly stated that a property has no vested interest in the highest and best use of his land and in solely the monetary sense of that term, as far as it relates to zoning. Moreover, the Idaho Supreme Court has repeatedly declared that a zoning ordinance which downgrades the economic value of property does not constitute a taking of property in violation of the United States Constitution where some residual value remains in the property. However, here, the request for reconsideration is not the result of downgrading the zoning designation of the subject property to restrict its land use, but a request to change the zoning designation to prohibit additional uses not otherwise available in its current classification. Additionally, while the applicant may not have realized the full potential of his commercial property as a result of market factors, the highest and best use standard is not one of the enumerated relevant criteria and standards for which the city council must base its zoning decision upon. Today's request for reconsideration is not an opportunity for the city council to take additional evidence or testimony in support or opposition of ZNC 24-4, but an opportunity for it to affirm, reverse, or modify its decision to deny ZNC 24-4 based on one or more of the following criteria found in Lewiston City Code 37-185D. The decision violates state or federal law. The decision exceeds the statutory or delegated authority of the city council. The decision was made through procedures that were unlawful or inconsistent with the Lewiston City Code or Idaho Code. The decision is not supported by substantial evidence, or the decision is arbitrary, capricious, or an abuse of discretion in that it was made without rational basis or in disregard of the facts and circumstances presented. Even if the record would support two different interpretations of what city code and the applicable state and federal law requires, the action is not arbitrary, capricious, or an abuse of discretion if exercised honestly and after due consideration upon review. In reconsidering your prior decision, I remind you that you have the entire record before you today to consider, which includes the packet of materials supplied to you on November 25, 2024, the testimony received during any of the public hearings, oral and written, the reason statements of relevant criteria and standards, the request for reconsideration and application for zone change, and all video recordings related to the deliberations held. Upon reconsideration, you may affirm, reverse, or modify your decision pursuant to Lewiston City Code and Idaho Code. I encourage you to go through each of the relevant criteria and standards and articulate whether you wish to affirm, reverse, or modify your prior reasoning, and then state why you have made the decision you have, so that an adequate written statement may be prepared in support of whatever decision you make. For example, Mr. Clark argues that the city council erred in finding the proposed rezone inconsistent with the city's comprehensive plan, stating that his property is located on residential streets and surrounded by mixed-use properties. Related to this specific objection from Mr. Clark, the statutory requirement that a request to rezone property be in accordance with the comprehensive plan requires the governing body to make a factual inquiry into whether the request reflects the goals of and takes into account factors in the comprehensive plan in light of the present, present factual circumstances surrounding the request. The reason statement of relevant criteria and standards adopted by the city council points out that the property's neighborhood commercial designation on the future land use map primarily supports commercial uses, allowing apartments only if located above or behind commercial spaces. However, rezoning the property would displace the Thane commercial frontage, and the residential units would not meet the comprehensive plan's criteria for being above or behind commercial uses. In deciding whether to affirm, reverse, or modify your decision, you're being asked whether there is sufficient evidence on the record to support your prior conclusion or whether the applicant has presented sufficient basis for your, for you to reverse or modify your decision. Regardless of your decision, please ensure that you clearly state the reasoning why you have reached your conclusion. I encourage you to vote through a voice majority on each relevant criteria and standard, thoroughly reviewing each prior, each criteria prior to moving. and standard, thoroughly reviewing each prior, each criteria prior to moving on to the next. Then, once all five have been reviewed, make a final decision, decision on the application as a whole. From there, a written decision on reconsideration can be prepared and presented for your approval before your decision is made final. I stand for any questions on procedure for tonight's request for reconsideration.
Thank you, Jennifer. Counselors, do you have questions for Ms. Jennifer today? Do you understand the task before you?
That's right.
Counselor Shoder.
Do I recruit myself now?
You are still technically recused from this, so.
Okay, thank you.
To reiterate, Counselor Shoder will not be participating in today's request for reconsideration because she's still statutorily has a conflict of interest.
Thank you, Jennifer. And counsel, again, the action item is considering whether to affirm, reverse, or modify city council's decision on the application for zone change by Mr. Clark to rezon the east 43 feet of 132 Thane Road from Community Commercial to Medium Density pursuant to Lewiston City Code 37-185B. And our city attorney has advised you to review the criteria and make your decision based on that. So if you have a copy of that, you showed in your package or maybe on your computers, there are five of them, and we can go through those one at a time. You can review those and state whether or not you think that the criteria fits or does not fit for this decision, this action item, and then we will ask for a vote on that. So, okay, I'll switch, but let's start with the relevant criteria standards. Number one, the proposed rezon is not in general conformance with the Lewiston comprehensive plan. So again, we're not looking for new testimony, new evidence, but rather your thoughts on whether or not you think this statement is true or applies. So with that, counselors, I'll open it up.
Mayor.
Counselor Klein.
I believe that it is in general conformance with the Lewiston comprehensive plan in that we're allowing, we're allowing more mixed use to our, to our commercial properties. There, it doesn't, it doesn't align with the proposed neighborhood commercial zone because of the way it's located, but with this specific property, it seems like that if, if you're going to do it at this property, having the, having the residential go into the parking lot first and to alleviate the traffic, you'll have more, okay, so, commercial, commercial property will have more incoming traffic, so it makes sense that that would be coming in after the residential population. Very unideal property for a commercial. Where it's located.
Thank you, counselor, for the comments. Counselors, Foreman or Cleaver? Counselor Foreman?
I would just agree with Counselor Klein's statements.
Final?
Yeah, that sounds, I agree with that. Concur.
Hey, counselors, next up, you have the number two. The subject property is not at least as well-suited or is better suited for the proposed zoning district than the existing zoning district. Do you have any comments? Counselor Foreman?
Wasn't ready yet, but it can be. I think that if, as we've stated in the last meetings, that they're not able to rent out the property as is, that better suited would make a valid argument that trying to use, utilize their property and not have it be vacant, it, by this rezon would help with that. And so I think it is valid.
Counselor President Cleaver?
Agreed.
Agreed, okay, Counselor Klein?
Agreed.
Okay. Counselors, next we have criteria three, which is the proposed rezon does or does not present foreseen in medical, in medical impacts of incompatible uses or development being located in the same vicinity. Counsel President Cleaver?
No, I don't see where it's going to affect any of the current zoning.
Could you say that one more time, maybe speak up a little bit, counsel?
Oh, I don't see where it would affect any of the current zoning.
Thank you. Counselor Klein?
Agreed.
I agree, I don't think that it's going to affect any other zoning in the hearing.
Counselors, next up, number, criteria four, the effects of the proposed rezon are not anticipated to place undue burden upon delivery of services provided by any political subdivision within the planning jurisdiction, including school districts. Counselor Klein?
I agree with that, that statement.
Foreman, any comments?
No, just agreeance.
Same.
Counselors, and the last criteria, number five, the size, type, intensity, and density of the development expected to occur on the subject property as a result of this rezon is not suitable for the area, but will be, will, but will not unduly burden the neighborhood, public infrastructure, or environmental resources. Counselor Foreman?
Yeah, I agree.
Counselor President Cleaver?
That's correct.
Counselor Klein?
I believe that it, it.
That it is suitable?
Is suitable.
Okay. Thank you. Jennifer, do you have some guidance for us?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Again, my name's Jennifer Tagano, City Attorney. So it appears, based on your current review of the five elements, that your decision will be to reverse your prior decision in ZNC 24-4. And reversing that decision and preparing the written statement based on some of the factors that you've provided, you do have the Planning and Zoning Commission's reasoned statement that it previously adopted at its October 9th, or October 16th. I'm sorry, I believe it was the 16th meeting, that they went through the same criteria and they found in favor of it. You can adopt it by incorporation and by reference, or you can also use any information that they provided to supplement any of your answers as far as the reasoning for that relevant, that reasoned statement of relevant criteria and standards goes through and identifies different areas of city code in which they found supports their conclusions, while I believe that theirs was a little bit mixed. As far as some of the reasoning, it does provide, provide some specific resource, or I'm sorry, references to the comprehensive plan and city code citations that may support your decisions that you've made today as well. So I would encourage you to consider to adopt it by incorporation in addition to the statements that you've previously made, if you wish.
Thank you, Jennifer. Counselors, any questions?
Would that be?
Counselor President Cleaver?
In the form of a motion?
Yes, Counsel President, that would be in the form of a motion, and that motion would be to direct staff to draft a written statement reversing the city council's decision to deny ZNC 24-4.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to reverse the decision and incorporate the Planning and Zoning Commission's reasoned statement from, let's see, October 10th?
I think it was the 16th, but you can just reference it, the adopted, the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
The, per the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, so there's a motion to direct staff to draft a written statement reversing city council's decision to deny ZNC 24-4 and incorporate by reference the planning and zoning relevant criteria? Jennifer?
Reason statement of relevant.
Reason statement and relevant criteria. Is there a second? Counselor Foreman? Okay. Is there further discussion or amendments? There are none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Counsel, next up, we have item B, 2025 Emergency Operations Plan, Considering Approving the 2025 Nesperse County Emergency Operations Plan and Authorizing the Mayor to Sign It. This is an action item. We have our emergency management coordinator, Jim Widercheck, with us today, counsel, to present this to you. Jim, welcome, and please introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is James Widercheck, I'm the Nesperse County Emergency Manager, and I'll try to keep this as brief as possible for you. Part of my responsibilities is to write an emergency operations plan for the county. This was started from my predecessor in about 2023. They worked on one from then to through 2024. And when I got here, I took over the project and I, I found enough discrepancies in it that I just needed to start over. So that's what I did, I rewrote the plan in an, using the FEMA guidance book specifically, the very specific format of emergency support function. We had to incorporate the 15 major threats that we've identified through the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is also, I wrote earlier this year, it's being reviewed by FEMA. Then the other portion of this, that's, we've been in coordination with the Corps of Engineers, they're going through their accreditation process for the levee system. They wanted specific language written into this emergency operations plan for responses to emergencies to that system, from a routine maintenance all the way through a severe imminent or a breach of the levee system. So we followed their specific guidance, they had FEMA review it, they have an approved three-level system that they use, we adopted that, we added it into our, our emergency operations plan as well. Another area that we had to address was a, it's called a National Qualification System Training Plan, that was to be completed by 2025. I didn't see that it had been started on by my predecessor, so I incorporated that training plan into this. And then what it does is identify who in the emergency operations office, which is only myself, but we do have, we work with, you know, say Greg Wrightmeyer Francis as a chief of police for Lewiston, he's, would be a part of our operations center as well in some capacity. But for the purpose of my job, it, it identifies whether or not the position is deployable or not deployable. Only meaning deployable, I could go anywhere in the nation and perform these functions. Non-deployable, meaning I can go to all the contiguous areas in our location, which means who do we share a land border with? Nesperse County shares a land border with Leittah County, Clearwater County, Lewis, and Idaho Counties. I cannot cross the river, though, it's very specific, says if it's a water border, can't go across it. So I would help out Nick Bacon, the emergency manager, in any other way I could besides going over and taking over for him. So those are the things that, the major changes, the rest of it was kind of a formatting process, the previous person or my position paid to have this formatted in a way. I didn't particularly like the way it was done, so I just redid the entire thing. So, 2024-1 was signed, I have not posted it. My intent is to update this every year, I've updated it for 2025. Part of the request from the Army Corps of Engineers was that the Lewiston City Mayor also signed off on it and the plan be adopted by the city. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Counselors, questions for James?
Mayor.
Counselor Foreman?
No questions, just a comment. I read through this and it was very easy to read through, I thought it was well organized and was easy to metabolize, so I appreciate that and all the work that you put into this. So I, I don't see any problem with, with this revision.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Counselors, if there are no questions, this is an action item.
Mayor.
Counselor Foreman?
Motion to approve the 2025 Nesperse County Emergency Operation Plan and authorizing the mayor to sign the plan.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Foreman, second by Counselor Shoder to approve the 2025 Nesperse County Emergency Operations Plan and authorizing the mayor to sign the plan. Is there further discussion? There are none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, counselor, next item, item C, a city council vacancy nomination, considering applications for the city council vacancy and Mayor Johnson's potential nomination to fill the vacancy through December 2025. This is an action item. Counselors, for review, Idaho Code 50-704 says that a vacancy on the council shall be filled by nominations made by the mayor, and that's what we're doing today. We also put together a recommended process for council vacancy, and one of that, one of that, part of the process was the review by the mayor, the city clerk gathered the applications, the mayor had the opportunity to look over the applications, considering each applicant's qualifications, background, and reasons for wanting the position, and then there was an option for interviews if needed. And I'd like to just address that part of it briefly. And first of all, say thank you to everyone who applied, everyone who's here today, it's great to have your involvement in city government. We need more involvement in city government, we need to hear from more folks, I'm very appreciative of that, and I know what it's like to put your name out there and get in the arena, so thank you for doing that. To tell you how I went through the review process, I did read the, the applications a few times to study them, then I also went over these applications with some of the council members, they shared with me what their preferences were for the candidates. I did receive citizen comments on a handful of the applicants, citizens had shared some of their concerns or support for candidates, and then also some of the candidates reached out to me, so I appreciate that engagement that I received from them. So based on that review that I had with the counselors, individually, I should state, citizen comments that I received, for and against, and then the engagement that I had from the candidates, and again, tonight, I appreciate your being here, it is my intention to nominate three folks, three names to the council tonight, and I will nominate them in order of what you shared with me was your priorities for this candidate, and then it's up to you to confirm this person or not. So I'm, I'm taking my input, I'm taking your input, and presenting three candidates to you tonight. So the first candidate for your consideration is Robert Michael Lorenz. So I nominate Robert Michael Lorenz for the city council vacancy. Okay, no second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Johnson, second by Counselor President Cleaver, to consider the application of Robert Michael Lorenz for the city council vacancy. Is there discussion?
Mayor?
Counselor Foreman?
Just a question, are we going, we're going to name all three that you have picked, right?
Did I, did I not do that?
I don't know if I heard.
No, you haven't.
I feel like, I was like, I don't think I heard all three names.
Thank you for calling me out.
That's why I didn't second it, because I was waiting for all three names.
No, thank you for calling me out on that. So the three names, and again, this is based on the input that I received from meeting with counselors individually, through citizen comments that I received, and then also some of the candidates reached out to me, is Robert Michael Lorenz, Matthew James Wright, and Douglas J. Wilson. Those are the three names that I intend to present to you tonight. And the first of those is Robert Michael Lorenz, it's been moved by Mayor Johnson, second by Counselor President Cleaver. Is there further discussion? There are none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed, please.
Okay, motion fails. Next up, I have for your consideration is the application of Matthew James Joseph Wright for the city council vacancy.
Second.
Been moved by council, Mayor Johnson, second by Counselor Klein to consider the application for. to consider the application for City Council Vacancy of Matthew James Joseph Wright. Is there discussion? If not, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Counselor Forssman, did you vote?
Sorry. Aye.
Okay. Dr. Rocky, did you get that?
Yep.
I showed three ayes and one nay?
Yep.
Okay, motion passes, and we welcome to the council Matthew James Joseph Wright. I think he's here tonight. Welcome.
Thank you.
And we'll follow up with you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Council, next up, Roman number five, Discussion Items. Please note that identifying an item as an action item does not require the City Council to vote on that item. Item A, amended ordinance 4921, Discussion and Direction to Staff on the Proposed Amendment Shipping Container Ordinance Before Referring to Planning and Zoning Commission for its Recommendation. This is an action item. Council? Any discussion on the shipping container ordinance before referring it to planning and zoning? None? Okay. We'll move on to item B, Annexation of CCI Spear Properties on Snake River Avenue and Southport Avenue. This is a discussion led by Counselor Klein on potential annexation of CCI Spear properties, including tax revenue and budget impacts to the city of Lewiston. Counselor Klein, I will turn this over to you. And I'll just ask you to remember to speak up loudly and clearly so those listening at home can hear what you have to say.
Okay. So on this one, I was mostly just curious as to why we have a major business in town that isn't contributing city taxes, city tax dollars. And we got some information about how that all works as far as, as why we wouldn't, as far as why we wouldn't be annexing a business into the city that's surrounded on, you know, three sides, like the property, the CCI Spears property on Snake River Avenue seems to be. Part of it is because we get, we get, we'd be losing $600,000 in water consumption that they pay the city of Lewiston. And then we'd also be, maybe I should just read this. Everybody, this is public information anyways, right? Makes sense. Okay. So, annexation of one or both properties would have a positive impact to the non-exempt property tax budget and a negative impact to the city of Lewiston's enterprise fund and general fund. First, the non-exempt property tax budget would increase because more taxable property would be added to the tax base in the next budget year. Based on information from the Nesperse County Assessor's Office and using the 2024 city of Lewiston levy rate of 0.005088467 property and business taxes for the Snake River Avenue property would add up to $340,000, while the Southport Avenue property would add up to $221,000 in non-exempt property taxes. The non-exempt property tax budget increase is subject to a cap. Secondly, the revenues to the water and wastewater utilities would decrease because properties outside the city limits pay higher fees than properties inside the city limits. Water wastewater fees for the Snake River property would be reduced approximately $600,000 based on the current levels of consumption. Likewise, the Southport property water wastewater fees would be reduced approximately $65,000, again based on the current level of consumption. Lastly, there would be a reduction to the general fund of approximately $200,000 because Federal Cartridge Company would no longer need a fire prevention and protection services agreement with the city of Lewiston. These services are provided to all city properties at no additional cost. In summary, there most likely would be an increase in the non-exempt property tax budget, a decrease in water wastewater revenues, and a decrease in general funds. So... What I concluded is that by annexing them into the city, we lose, the city itself loses money. But if we annex it into the city, you also, they also will be responsible for paying school levy and stuff that they currently don't pay, that the city, the citizens do. And my hope would that, would be that it would, if we did annex it, and it would offset residential property. It's something to put out there.
Counselors, questions, comments? This is not an action item. This is just for discussion, for information tonight. Counselor Kleberg?
Yeah, I'll just throw this out. I'm not sure when the last time there was any, I don't know, interest in pursuing annexation. I'm thinking it's been quite a while, but now with new ownership, might be interesting to have that chat. If there's any interest on their part. Who would want to, we're gonna annex it. It would be nice if it was in a meddle agreement as opposed to a hostile takeover. But that'd be a discussion for somebody else that's sitting on my left.
There's any more questions or comments at this time?
My, my comment would just be, obviously aware and careful, because if we annex it and then we have a drop in our overall budget, would we be, and we're already kind of, we're already tight budget, are we gonna put ourselves at risk of having to raise the budget? Like raise our overall budget to contribute essential services? So I, I just don't know if we see the benefit at the moment, but I would be open to having a discussion with the owners and going over, I guess, pros and cons of whether this would be beneficial for them, us. But currently, the numbers aren't really leaning in the favor of it being a better move. But I don't think it's worth, you know, I think it's worth still having more discussion if the mayor so chooses to dive into that.
Counselor President Kleberg?
Yeah, well, Counselor Klein's presented, I mean, it's really, the effect is on the enterprise funds, not the general fund, which would grow because we have a larger tax base. But having $600,000 lost out of our water, the water fund would be a pretty good-sized chunk of change, so.
Counselor Schroeder?
Thank you. I wasn't sure when this first came out that it was who had actually initiated it. So I, I don't know that it's anything that really needs to be, until they come forward, I think that it is kind of a moot point. It doesn't appear to be an advantage for us to initiate this. And if they choose to want to do it, then I think that, they've come to us for it. I think that would be the way to wait for this and see. So I'm in favor of just not doing anything with this.
Counselor Schroeder, this came about, this was an agenda item that was edited at the request of council previously to have a discussion on this. And Counselor Klein was tasked with leading the discussion. So I can tell you that probably a year and a half ago, I did have this conversation with CCI Spear. And at the time, they did not express an interest in pursuing this. There's always a question of whether or not you can even annex them anyway. I mean, you just assume that you can, and the rules are different on that. So you don't even, you'd have to get past that part two. And then just to also tell you, like, where it says the non-exempt property tax budget increase is subject to a cap. So what that means is it's not even a guarantee that we'd get 100% of the property taxes, you know, that would be assessed. It's all, the tax formula is kind of, there's a lot of things working there. So it would take a little bit more homework, you know, to find out what this might be. And probably a discussion with the new owners to see if they even had any interest in this. But yes, it's, there's some positive revenues and there's some negative revenues. So, you know, whatever the net would be. Plus, I think too, you know, at some point, we think about our neighbor relationships, you know, and we certainly wouldn't want to necessarily go in there and try to force somebody to do something.
Absolutely.
So, lot to think about here. Counselor Klein, do you have any further direction or questions or requests to the council at this time? Or staff?
Well, I just thought I would bring it to the table and see what it, see what it looked like, see what the numbers added up to, because it feels like it would be the fair thing to do. But the reasoning behind why we do what we do is important for people to know.
Counselor Forssman?
Just, so I make sure I understand that. So it says, lastly, there would be a reduction to the general fund of $200,000 because the Federal Cartridge Company would no longer need a fire protection. So if I understand that correctly, we would have a reduction in the general fund as well. So I think it takes out of each pocket, really.
We would have an increase with the tax revenues and a decrease with the fire contract.
Right, but we don't know if it would even out, right?
I'm not prepared to say that it would.
Exactly. Yeah, sorry. I just meant to say, yeah. So I don't see it being a value added at this current time. I'd appreciate that we talked about it.
Thank you. Counselors, next up, we have Discussion Item C, Fifth Street and Brighton Avenue property. Again, this is a discussion that would be led by Counselor Klein on whether to auction city property at Fifth Street and Brighton Avenue. So Counselor Klein, I will turn the table over to you.
Okay. On this one, it was mostly because it seems like we're holding on to a piece of property that we're not gonna use. I reached out to a couple of realtors, and one of them got back to me. Steve Knight thought that the property could potentially be worth $825,000 at $16 to $19 a square foot. I'm not sure why we're holding on to this piece of property if we're hoping that the value will grow.
Mayor?
Counselor Forssman?
So that particular property was intended for the new fire department, if I'm correct. So, which fell through due to increasing costs and just not financially sound at the moment when we made that decision. Whether holding on to that property any longer, I think that's definitely a part of debate and a discussion because I think there is better suited properties for a fire station that could potentially expand it to even updating for our police because our police have an aging infrastructure as well. So I think definitely think that this is worth continuing to investigate.
Counselor Schroeder?
Had you contacted Fire Chief Rightmeyer in regards to whether it was something that he had no interest in? Had you checked with him on that? Since that was the initial reason for having that property?
Well, it was established that it wasn't going to be used for a fire station, right? And so if it's not going to be used for that, do we take, do you sell it and use that money to invest like we do in other funds that we do? So that by the time we do find a property, it's, you know, the value's grown? Or I just don't want to have to, you know, they try and find a property, and now we don't have the money to buy it because it's invested in this piece of land that we still own and have to turn around, auction, you know, time for purposes, we won't have that money if we need it.
Counselor Schroeder?
So in regards to that, I have no problem with, since there is no intent at all for that to ever be the property for a fire station. And I'm fine to, to tell it.
Rightmeyer, would you be willing to state your position on it?
Concerns.
Counselor Klein, you'd have to ask the mayor to do it.
Sorry. You're out of order, ma'am. I'm out of order.
I gotta think about that one.
Do you want him to speak?
Counselor, I will give you the courtesy. Chief Rightmeyer, are you prepared to answer a question from the council?
I can make, I have one comment, I think, to Counselor Schroeder. Greg Rightmeyer, Lewiston Fire Chief. The, we haven't had any discussions about it. I think that right now, the thought process is not that it would never be a fire station. The council directed at the time not to build and continue with that contract. The current fire station identified in the 2020 Station Study Plan that council's adopted stipulates that the location that it's at is not an adequate location. 50% of the coverage area is land that we don't respond to. And we don't, we already have a fire station now at the airport. So if at some point in time in the future, we were to use that or put a fire station at the airport, we would just use the one that's there. And so I think that the council will have to make a decision at some point in time of whether or not, when is the right timing to execute that station study and move a new fire station? My only caution would be that the land that you have is the land you have. I don't think we'll ever eminent domain somebody to put a fire station someplace. So when you look at the area of that station and look in the station study, I encourage you to look at that. There's very few pieces of property. So right now, it's a bird in the hand is worth, you know, and so we have that. At least right now, I think, I'm not an investment person. Director Gordon's not here. But I think if, when you have an investment in real estate, all the real estate goes up and down together. So we could sell that and purchase something else. But if we put it into the limited investments we can put in bonds and things like that as a city, I don't know that, I mean, we would gamble at whether or not we would increase over or we would lose money on that. So that's my only thought, is right now, it's the only thing we have. And maybe there's some future thing where we could get a more cost-effective solution at that location, or we can look at, you know, something else.
Thank you.
That's my two cents.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, I appreciate that. Thanks, I appreciate the mayor, you got me in trouble.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, counsel, for your patience. Any other discussion on Fifth Street and Brighton? Comments, questions? You know, I think it's fair to say, too, that we have a number of investments across the city that we're gonna have to take a look at someday and decide if we want to keep them or not, or how best to organize those. And that includes our streets and everything else that we do. So I can see this coming up again in a future discussion where we talk about some of our deferred maintenance that we're looking at, whether or not we would pursue consolidation of our facilities. We took a look at that one time. And also, some of the places that we, for example, manage in our Parks and Recs Department, we manage a lot of properties for other agencies around the city. So whether or not we want to continue to do that or, you know, focus elsewhere. So there's plenty to do out there. Just gotta make a decision on some of these things and provide some guidance. So that would be my two cents on that. Counselor Forssman?
I wouldn't be ready to jump and sell it at this current time. But I definitely think going into further discussions and talking about whether we would be able to kind of get more bang for our buck if we did sell it, or whether it's better that we hang on to it until we have a more suitable property. I think it's worth us to go through that avenue, as well as the citizens to kind of hear those routes, and just reevaluate this project and see where we're at, so we don't stay stagnant. Definitely don't want to get to a point where we just have it sitting there for years and we never make movement. So I definitely think it's worth bringing it up again and talking about, do we want to have it as a fire station? Or do we want to look at other avenues and making a plan for it?
Those are good comments. And, you know, if we think about this, if we take a longer-term view, the chief talked about the station study, and he encouraged you to go take a look at that. Now, down at Station 1, I think in that study, it talks about even trying to relocate that someday, getting a bigger station, but moving it west a little bit so that it's a little bit more centrally located for that part of town. So where would that be? Well, 21st Street would be one example of where it might be good to do something like this. So I think we have a lot of, you know, when you talk about one piece of property, I think we can also talk about the other side of it, too, about acquiring property where we may need to prepare and build for the future of the city. So please start here quite a bit, so. So, please start here quite a bit, so. Counselors, next one, move to room number six, unfinished and new business. Item A, city council comments. Comments should not be related to an item currently before the city council, or an item that may come before the city council in the foreseeable future, shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Counselors, any comments today, tonight? Counselor Klein?
I just wanted to kind of put it out there that people probably should get dash cams. With dash cams.
Cameras on your, all of them?
Cameras. The cops can't be everywhere. There's a lot of really aggressive drivers around Lewiston. And so, by having a dash cam, you're kind of holding people accountable to drive like they should be, following the rules. If you don't have a dash cam, there's, it's just hearsay, you know, you're just saying that somebody did something they weren't supposed to, and there's no repercussions for, they just get away with it. So, it's helped us in a lot of, in a lot of issues that we've run into. We have them in all of our vehicles, and so, I encourage people to get one.
Mayor?
Ms. Forstman?
I just wanna thank the candidates that came out and spoke and put their name in the hat and interviewed. And that election's coming up soon. Before we know it, it'll be here, and so, I encourage you to put your name in the hat and go through that fun of speaking why you wanna be on the council, and advocating for yourself, and running your own little campaign, or, it's definitely daunting and a lot of work, but it's worth it in the end. And I encourage you guys to not give up, even if you didn't get it today, to run again, and hopefully be able to state yourself to the citizens and advocate for yourselves.
Good counselor. Comments? No? Okay. Item B, city boards and commissions, please, on updates. Counselors, I'm just gonna ask, from your work on those boards and commissions, if you have any updates or some encouraging words you can share with us today.
Our NPL meeting has been put off this week.
I think holidays, things kind of skipped, not a lot of information.
So, one thing we will do at our next meeting is we will reassign any of the commissions or boards that Counselor Liptke had to our new counselor, and he'll like them.
Because you're gonna get them.
It just comes with the job. Mikey had to do it, you know, with his oatmeal or whatever that was, Life cereal or something, so.
I can remember, Mikey liked it.
We do mix those up once in a while, but we'll have some other work to talk to you about. And I will tell you, too, counselors, one of the changes that I'm putting in at City Hall with these boards and commissions is when we get an applicant to serve on these boards and commissions, I'm asking them to come into City Hall and, you know, spend five or 10 minutes with me, so that I can get to know them a little bit before I bring a name to you, and then I say, I nominate this person, and I don't even know them. I've never even met them. So, we can put some more work on the front end of this, and hopefully be very successful on the back end. But we really depend on their service, we depend on your involvement with these boards and commissions, and with your reporting back to us, telling us what these boards and commissions are thinking, but it's also your opportunity to carry the message of the council back to the commissions and boards and say, we have some important work for you, that we need some help on. And so, I think sometimes we could communicate a little bit more on that, but it's very important that we receive these updates at these meetings, so the rest of your council members know, but also the public knows what's going on with them, because they do very important work for us. And I guess that'll be item C, that's the mayor's comments. And I, too, wanna thank all the candidates who put their name in and who've been involved in city government. I was very encouraged to see all the applications that we had. Everybody had something to offer the city, and I appreciate that. And I would echo Counselor Forstman's comments, to put your name in the hat and run again. And it is a lot of work, and it's, it can be kind of scary sometimes, but we need to hear from our citizens, from our people, and we need their service, so. And I don't know what the board's gonna look like next. I don't know who's running or not, but we may have more than one opening. Next item is item G, agenda topics. Counselors, any agenda topics, items to talk about? There are none. Move to room number seven, adjournment, action item.
May I make a motion to adjourn? Second?
Been moved by Counselor Forstman, seconded by Counselor Schroder to adjourn. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? We are adjourned. Thank you.